All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for joining us today. Today's town hall is talking about the indoor league and all of the COVID return to play protocols. We're very excited to finally get the sport going back again, and we hope you are all too. So today on the call, my name is Caitlin. I am in charge of all of the four v four, all the way up to 15 new leagues and regular season play. We have Carrie Campbell, who will be presenting, who is our manager of indoor programs. We have Alicia, who will also be presenting today, who is the director of operations. And I do see some other faces here. We have Joanne Luvich, who is our executive director. And also Mark will be on this call, kind of in the background. He deals with the 16 new to 18 new. So we will have the presentation go on, and then if you have any questions throughout the presentation, based off of what we are presenting, please put them in the chat, and we will be asking them at the very end of each section of our town hall today. So with that, I'm going to pass it along to Alicia, who's going to start us off with return to play stuff.
Um, Alicia, can you share, allow me to share my screen?
Maybe that might help. There you go. I want to let Carrie pull it up. Perfect. And Caitlin, you're good to let people in still. See some more coming into the waiting room.
As long as you make me a host.
Oh, my goodness. There we go. We should be good. All right, Carrie, you can click along. Yep. So Caitlin kind of went over everything briefly, but we're talking there tonight. So I will just jump right into it, Carrie, if you want to go to the reopening plan. So everyone, I'm sure you know, the government has updated their regulations again. We're now on version 58 of step three of the reopening Ontario plan, and I am not kidding. If you go to the website, we're on version 58. So we are seeing a lot of loosening of the restrictions as Ontario prepares for a long-term reopening of the province. So here's just some information based on the government regulations that are out there now. They were updated at the end of October again. As we know, October 25th, the capacity limits were lifted. Wherever proof of vaccinations is required, including sport and rec facilities. So that's helpful for us to see. Something to keep in mind there is still check in with your facilities in terms of capacity limits as they're not all doing the full 100% to make sure they're reducing the risk of mitigation of like transmission and overcrowding and all that fun stuff. If we look at the dates for the government moving forward in the new year, they're looking at lifting more of the vaccine certificate requirements, as long as there's not alarming trends. If you fast forward to March, they're talking about, you know, lifting all public health safety measures, including masking and getting rid of the emergency health orders. So they could still have some recommendations over masking could be maintained, but it's all, it will be, we'll find out later in the spring of what happens. Some key things to note with this reopening plan, target dates probably or can change based on a monitored trends of COVID across Ontario. The other thing to note is that local public health regions may impose additional measures. So the trends the government will be watching closely are the ICU admission rates, effective reproductive numbers, test positivity, weekly case counts, and so on. Basically to see if we can continue on with the reopening path, or if they had to kind of pull us back a bit and put some more and impose some more restrictions. So we just had to kind of play it by ear there and wait until we get more information from the government as the months go on. The other thing that we found interesting with this new plan is as the government continues to manage this on the longer term, they're looking at more of responding via a localized approach. There we go. Kind of almost like back, I don't want to say this, you know, the traffic like model we had, I think it was last fall. But they're kind of putting it back down to the discretion of the medical health officers for each public health unit region. So some measures that they could take individually is reintroducing capacity limits for that area, reintroducing physical distancing, proof of vaccinations, all that fun stuff. So just some, you know, we always kind of had to keep monitoring these regulations and we'll continue to update all of you as they get updated. So Carrie, next slide. So we are still in step three, even though they've made a lot of changes to these regs. Effective October 21st, like I mentioned, the capacity limits were lifted in majority of settings where proof of vaccination is required. Even though it seems like we're amazing that we could technically be back to almost 100% capacity, we're seeing that's not the case across the board as amateur sport facilities are doing their part to mitigate the transmission by limiting those numbers. So in our events, in your facility permit rentals, just make sure you have that conversation to really finalize what that capacity limit is for you. And for our events, we're doing the same. Great. If you don't mind keeping yourself muted. Thanks. That would be helpful. The other thing that we are seeing due to the proof of vaccination at sport and rec facilities and the required mask usage, the physical distancing rules have been relaxed a bit. So some things to note is spectators, they don't have to physical distance in the seating areas anymore. We are allowed to have benches again. We don't have to have spaced out chairs running down the sidelines for our teams to physical distance. Score tables, scorers can sit side by side at the score tables. That's kind of great to see that during the engagement of the match that physical distancing isn't really required there anymore. So that's good. The things that are still in effect for step through regulations that we all have to do is our safety plans. We still have to have that for the specific venues and in order to get our permit. So we need to make sure that that is there. We're sharing that information with all participants. It's on the club website and so forth. You still have to do the daily health screening, contact tracing, the mandatory mask usage for everyone outside of athletes engaged actively in the sport. You can temporarily remove your mask as well to eat and drink indoors, but that's when more of the physical distancing comes back into play. You still have your cleaning and equipment disinfecting protocols in place and the COVID vaccination checks, the point of entry for businesses. We are still updating our return to play guidelines. We're trying to simplify it to match these new regulations with a lot of the information that has been removed. All of the appendix items except for one have been updated to match these new regulations and are online on the return to play page. And I'm hoping to get the RTP out sometime this week or early next week for everyone. Okay, you can click forward. Okay, so kind of hopping into return to play protocols and how we all comply OVA as well as, you know, the pod match organizers or tournament hosts. So very quickly, just follow the return to play protocols, including the modified rules of the game. If we're doing that, we're making sure we're following the public health regulations, the Ontario regulations, facility regulations and so forth. Once again, create and share your safety and communication response plan with the facility and participants. We still had to have a printed copy as per the regulations on hand. So if someone asks for it, we can hand it to them and they can read it. Vaccine tracking, daily contact health screening, participant contact tracing, that needs to be done as well. So once again, we need to make sure with our facility, we're confirming who is checking that, like as a permit holder, are they expecting you to do it? Or do they have facility staff that will be doing that for you? We still have to do our cleaning and sanitization of equipment after each match to make sure we're following those cleaning protocols. And we're going to be following the OVA indoor competition rule modifications for risk mitigation. So Carrie, if you want to click forward again, I'll go over those quickly. So we used to have a nine-page document of rule changes, but thankfully, as the rules are loosening and we're allowed to do more back in sport, I think we're down to like three pages of rule modifications. It's not as bad. So quickly, the masking requirements that's still in place, everyone still has to have that on except for athletes when we're playing on the court. Athletes can wear it if they want to. So that's part of the role modification for referees. You can add it to the uniform of what people are wearing. The side switches, we are still keeping in the no side switches unless there's a major disadvantage on one side or the, over the other. This is going to be at the discretion of the referee. If there's an issue, he will or she will allow that to happen. As previously mentioned, benches can be used again. So we no longer have that physical distancing on the court level. Something we used to have removed was signing the score sheets, just, you know, stop the contact tracing or touching of all the same surfaces. If you have your own pen, bring that great. If not, we'll have a hand sanitizer on desk so people can hand sanitize before and after using the shared pens. We also ask that each team have their towels. If there are spells for them to clean up on their own side of the court, so we're not having a communal towel that we're sharing between each side of the court with the teams. That would be great. Carrie, next one. Also, going back to shared equipment, before we said that line judges, we weren't going to use them. We didn't want people sharing equipment, but that's fine. Again, just make sure we hand sanitize before and after use. So the next person has a nice clean flag to use when they're doing their lines. The big one here too, blood swelled uniforms. So not changing uniforms with other teammates. You know, we can have athletes wearing an extra uniform with unique number that's not associated with any other player on their team. If they have a warm-up shirt with a number on it too, that would suffice. We just want to make sure we're not sharing a lot of the same like personal contact equipment. Also with the deliberate physical contact wording has been removed from the regulations. However, it's still highly recommended to avoid deliberate physical contact outside of your cohort and team and stuff. So at the end of the match, we still have it where there's no handshakes in place. The teams can line up on three meter lines, do their clapping, kind of waving to the other team. We just want to, you know, eliminate that interaction, physical contact with those teams at this point still. Okay, that's basically in a nutshell, very quickly of the modified rules. You can find all of the modified rules of the game on the OVA website under the return to play section, and we have the additional documents. It's under the appendix items. So that has been posted today. If you have any questions on modified rules, let me know. I do see a lot of questions or comments popping up in the chat, Caitlin, if you want to ask any questions.
Yes. So two questions for you.
Yep.
When you say actively engaged, do players on the bench need masks?
Yes, they do.
Okay, perfect. And do coaches and athletes still require to wear a mask in the playing area?
Coaches, yes. Athletes, if they're active on court, no. But on the bench, yes.
Perfect. And that's it for now.
Okay. All right. And if we can make sure everyone's muted except for Carrie, that would be good.
Okay, now we're into the tournament and league section of the presentation. So just a little bit of a housekeeping reminder. So we're going to stick to the questions regarding the league logistics and any of this presentation slides here. If you have any questions about your pod or the composition of your pod or anything like that, please make sure to contact.
Please make sure to contact. Just a reminder to everybody, please make sure that you are muted throughout the whole entire presentation. If you do have something to say or you have a question, please put it in the chat and we'll ask it at the end.
So yeah, just to continue, please email Mark or Caitlin in regards to those, those questions. And I do have to remind you, we are working on reduced hours for Mark and Caitlin. They are working as best they can to get to everybody's questions, but just a quick little comparison here, they're touching pretty much going to be touching over 1,000 matches over the league play. So that's a lot of work for them. So in, in the past, it would be, you know, a one tournament, you know, but now they're doing every game within a tournament. So please be patient. We're, we're working our best to try to get these questions answers as quickly as possible. So presentation today, let's stick to questions regarding the logistics or anything that's presented on the slides. Okay, so our 17 and 18 news, as we announced earlier in the year, will be doing tournaments and just a couple notes on their safety protocols. That your tournament information page is under your competition section and upcoming events, and then you can find your upcoming event. Click on that and find your tournament. This is where all your information is going to be from your tournament notes to anything from parking to COVID to, you know, whether or not scorekeepers will be provided, things like that. So check that frequently. As Alicia said, we're at version 58 of stage three opening. So the chances are that we might have another update. So check that frequently and you'll be able to get information from there. And just to remind her that we have to follow facility regulations, and that includes vaccinations and capacity of policies that they, they have. And they may be limiting their, their spectators and they may not be. And it also may be, you know, a bit subjective to you. However, you know, we're doing our best to make sure that we're creating a safe playing environment for the kids and just trying to keep everybody safe. You must follow the vaccination, the vaccine protocol for each facility. And this is again, it's supposed to on the tournament information plate page. If you're looking for a medical exemption, this must be applied directly to the facility and not the OVA. So it's good to note. And again, safety action plans will be sent to the assigners so that referees also know what's going to happen with the venue protocols and things like that. So that's for our 17, 18 news. And our safety action plans, if you want to know what they are, this information can be found on our COVID page. There's a template there for safety action plans. So you can just plug in your venues information and your clubs information in those templates and then share it. So it includes general event information and contact information, crowd control measures. Sometimes that might include entrance and exit points. Your event COVID 19 protocols, mask usage, things like that. Competition COVID-19 response plans. That means what's going to happen if we find out heaven forbid that there's somebody at the event that has contracted the virus in a communication, communication, communication plan. And also indoor competition staff training and a protocol review. So just so you know how to, you're, everybody attending your event kind of knows what to do and how to train them. So, and all this can be found, will be found on your tournament information page for the 17s and 18s. And if you have it also for any league play, we'll try to post it there too. So okay, so one second here. So just an overview of our leagues. So teams have now received their welcome email for their leagues. And this is pretty much what this presentation will drill down as well. Just kind of give you a bit more detail of what was in those emails. So we're going to cover everything from like the number of matches to coach eligibility. So as I know lots of teams are hard at work already and that each team has a a contact that will be their point person for scheduling their matches. And that contact information was included in your email. You're only required to contact the four teams in your pool play. If it's four teams, five teams, six teams, when you're scheduling your matches. And when you are doing your we recommend copying everybody on your pool play matches. So you know, who's knows what's doing what, and you can kind of hop in on something just so you, it might work out that you can do a little mini tournament, you know, or something like that. So just keeping everybody in the loop. And as a reminder, anybody participating in the leagues must be a full member of the OVA. So if you haven't already upgraded memberships, please do so. And you were asking you to use your gym time to complete all matches in your pools. And that also that league play can be delivered in a way that's best for your pod. So it doesn't have to be one game at a time. I mean, it doesn't have to be in the match order that was listed in your email. So it can be whatever works best for you guys. So if you have four hours on a Sunday afternoon and you can fit in three matches and everybody's available, then by all means, go ahead. So that's what's great about the flexibility of this. You can kind of do what works best for, for everybody. And you're not tied to any match order or number of games per day or week or anything like that. Okay. And just again, for your safety plans. We went over before that a safety plan outlines your policies and protocols to ensure that everybody is safe and attending, following the rules that are attending either your league match or your league day. The information presented ensures that the relevant sport or physical activity guidance documents have been consulted, including those from public health and government and the OVA. The safety plan describes how you're going to screen, your daily health screening, face mask covering, cleaning and disinfecting, PPE, how to control your crowds, how do you mitigate your risk and following the RTPs and also your proof of vaccination protocols. This email, like we should already have some of these in play. If we're following our return to play guidelines. So it's just a matter of just attaching it to your email to your clubs and say, hey, guys, just have a quick look before you go. Or if it's even possible, we may be able to post it to our website under your pod information page. So which will be going over tonight too. So your daily health screening and contact tracing. One second, I just got to move my here we go. How to move everybody's picture around. So contract tracing and daily health screening protocols will vary from facility to facility. Facility collects the info or the permit, permit holder may, might have to. So in some cases, if you are using a private facility, it's, it's been quite common that you actually have to check in at the front door. So they would be the ones that would be responsible for collecting your daily health screening. Or you might have to, if you're just using a community gym. So it's something that has to be done, whether it's you do it or your, your gym does it. So that is prior to each match, the permit holder is responsible for collecting the participants' contact tracing information as well as their daily health screening answers. And we have that information, like templates that you can use on our return to play document. Again, all on that website. And Caitlin, I believe, give me a nod if that was included, some links were included in the email. So that big email that you were sent does have direct links to that information as well. So hold on to that email and save it to your desktop or something. It's a great reference tool. Again, when you're scheduling your matches, make sure to include all your COVID-19 protocol information and communicate with any team that may be entering your venue or that you're going to be scheduling. If there happens to be a confirmed COVID-19 exposure during a league match, the permit holder must notify the OVA, the teams they played against and follow their safety communication plan as well as notify your public health unit in your region. So those are a couple of steps that you'll need to take. Knock wood that we won't have to. So just keep that in mind. Okay, so your pod split. So here's a snapshot just on my right-hand side of the screen of where your pod splits are going to be played. Right, it says November 18th, your 15 new boys provincial league play. So if you were to click that, that would bring you to your, your page and then pod A, B, C, D would all be listed there with your information. That's that link right there. It's also the events calendar. All information will be posted on this site. It might be quicker to email your teams directly than have forwarded to Caitlin or Mark. I know that they will post it. But again, they are touching over 1,000 matches over the league play. So that's, it's going to be very administratively heavily for them. So make sure that we can post it there. It might take a day or so to get it up, but you might also want to just forward it off to your, your pods as well. So our league information can be found here. So that's just a synopsis of, of the leagues. And information on it, it's just like a information page on just outlines the, some of the logistics. And teams can begin to schedule their matches now. I know that we said November 18th, but if you have open gym time now and you're, you're comfortable with it and everybody's ready to go, then, then let, let a rip. Let's start games as soon as we can. You will have until December 12th to complete all your league matches. We are going to have some flexibility with that, but keep in mind, we, this depends, these league matches depend on our scheduling for January. So we need some time to go through all these and get everybody sorted for January and splits made for January. So the quicker we get all our results in, the quicker you're going to know what January is going to look like and where you are in January. So December 12th is a great target to hit. Obviously, we'll try to be a bit flexible there when we can. Okay. And results collection. So we've created a form stack link for your results collection. So it's extremely important that we fill out these results as accurately as possible. So the link is here on the presentation. It's also in your email. When you are entering the team name, try not to use short forms. Please use exactly how it is spelt in your welcome email. And please use the format that's used in the example on Formstack. Any ties will be using tie breaking procedures that are outlined in our ease comp manual. Any of our events will be posted on our past events results page on the OVA website, and that's just this link here. So it'll this, it looks like this. And as the events tick by, they'll be listed here and then you can click on them and find them. So oh, okay. Sorry. All right. And this is what our form stack form looks like. It's pretty simple. It's a couple of dropdown menus where you select your league and division. So the example there is four v four rally ball provincial league. So you would select that and then you would select your pod. So it could be championship A, championship B, you know, just find your pod there for each of your for your league. And then team A, which was, is we considered the winning team, which is just listed right there. And the scores will only be for the, the winning team. So 25, you don't have to worry about having the non-winning score there or just their scores. So they got, they won the first one. They looks like they lost the last two, but that should be changed. Maybe we'll change that because that's supposed to be the winning team score. So technically, oh my goodness, I'm sorry. And then your team B, which is the non-winning team and their scores for that. And then and then there's a couple more fields to fill out for uploading the score sheet. So it's important for us to have the score sheet for insurance purposes. And just so we can have that reference back in the office. So please take a picture of your score sheet and just upload that and then we will be happy to, to have that in the office. That'll help us out a ton. Okay. And then your hosting packages. So they will be sent out tonight. We've been working all day getting them ready for you guys. So each, each kit will have an envelope with one envelope for each registered team for that club. So let's say the Spikers have 10 teams in various leagues. So they will get 10 envelopes in their, in their, in their package. So the envelopes will include some lineup cards, score sheets. You'll get some heads up posters, row and loss posters, warrant posters. And you also get some hand sanitizer and some, also some med kits, like extra masks and not med kits, like masks and gloves and things like that. Yeah. So that will be in your, your kit. That will be reviving shortly.
And one quick note, Carrie, just wanted, I saw the medals at the bottom. We won't be sending out the medals until probably late December, just so we can make it as efficient as possible. We'll probably send one package to each club if there's like three or four winners from a specific club. So yeah, probably near the end of December, you can expect those.
All right. Was that the last one? Okay, perfect. And for your referees, to make sure that you can guarantee yourself an OVA referee, you should try to contact your referee assigner at least five business days in advance. Your, there should have been an attachment on your email with a list of the assigners for each of your region. So send them off an email. You should let them know what time your schedule matches for, what venue is and what age division is playing. Our referee requirements, our single referee for 6v6 rally ball to 16 new and a referee option for 4v4 rally ball. So this flexibility there, obviously you could use self-referee or some coach referee. If they are on the court, they do have to be members. So just a little reminder there, if they're helping out with the ref. So just a little reminder there if they're helping out with the refereeing duties. A list of the assigners can also be found at that link here under the format tab of the league information. So there's a couple of dropdown menus for your league information. So just click. The format and then you'll have that. That link to the PDF for the assigners. And if you're not able to secure an OVA certified referee for your match, that's fine. We will still. Count the results as long as your both teams are in agreement and everybody gives us thumbs up. And we will be paying for that referee. So we're just asking you to contact them. And that's another reason why we want the score sheet to make sure that we're paying referees on time and. And making sure that they they get their back to the game as well, right? So make it a good experience. Okay, so host fees and payments. So as you mentioned before. We will be paying for Jim, Jim Costin up. So if you are a permit holder and you're playing an OVA league match, we're going to ask you to fill it in an expense form. And there is a link to the expense form right there. It's under the hosting information of the club resources page. And then please email it to accounts at Ontario volleyball.org. We need to see a copy of the permit. As well, and which identifies the time slot that was used. The payments will be made up to the club, not to the individual permit holder or sorry, not an individual person. It will be, yeah. So that's the way it has always done in the past, including for tournaments. We really would love these expense forms received prior to December 23rd, so we can make sure we are. Keeping those under in control. So we're going to reimburse the permit holder for 90 minutes of the cost of their. Permit for each two out of three match played per court. So in each host is also going to receive a $20 per match hosting fee at the venue. We looked at our just our traditional hosting fee amount and split that out. To try to arrive at, you know, a little extra thank you, if you will, for hosting those matches. Any additional fees such as mailing need to be pre approved by us, but there's also a little spot in your expense form for that as well. And we are asking that you submit all at once rather than one venue at a time if possible. We know that. It may not be possible, but and if you are in a pinch and you have a due date coming up on your permit, let us know. We'll try to squeeze it through. But. You know, it just might be easier for Mario as well, just to kind of keep it all bunched up. So yeah, so that's our fees and and payments information. And our coach eligibility policy, it hasn't changed since. The beginning of the season, we're maintaining the same policy for league play. With the exception of the four V four, if you are splitting. Your team, your assistant coach is permitted to be a head coach of one of those teams. So that's where the little caveat is for the coach eligibility policy. So we have to abide by the OVA screening policy, submit a vulnerable sector check. Or enhance police information check completed within the last three years. And you also have to fill out the screening disclosure form. And that can be done on Formstack. And you need to complete the following training. So the making headway, which is free in the locker room as well as safe sport training, which is free. And that's done through the locker as well. So you do have to create a profile within the locker if you haven't done that already. And then just go ahead and complete those two. Those two training modules. And a head coach needs to complete the foundations of volleyball and making ethical decisions online evaluation. So those need to be done for the the head coaches, technical director role. And just as a note that coaches are required to have met these conditions. And in order to be covered by the OVA insurance. If a lawsuit is initiated against a coach who has not completed the OVA eligibility requirements. OVA's insurance company may deny coverage. So it's really important that that's done. They're really, I've done one, two, everything except making ethical decisions online and it's it's informative. It's good. Does take a bit of time, but it's worth it in the end. And any information, contact LP on the coach eligibility policy and he'll be able to help you out. Okay. And now we're on to questions. Again, a reminder, please do not bring up questions regarding the composition of your pod. Just any of the logistics that were presented here today, so.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Carrie and Alicia. We have quite a few questions and I did see Alicia was also answering some, but I'm going to re ask them again so that. Everybody can get the answer to these. And just so everybody is aware, the town hall recording that we is going on right now will be posted. As well as an FAQ with like some of the popular questions from today. So that will all be posted. Hopefully tomorrow. Okay, so I'm just going to throw out the questions. Carrie, Mark, Alicia, whoever wants to answer them, feel free to step in. Okay, so. Talking about wearing masks. For libero's who come in and out of the court for four on four where everybody's rotating out, where where do we stand on masks?
Yep, sorry. So I answered that in the chat. Liberos and four on fours, and they really are active part of the game. They're running in and out. You know, especially libero, and then even on four or four rotational substitutions. They're okay not to have the masks coming off and on and throwing them on the floor because you know, they probably will not be put in a bag properly or safely disposed of. So yes, for those two situations, they are fine to keep their masks off because they are constantly engaged in the match.
Awesome. Can alternate scoring formats be considered if both teams agree? It might be difficult to fit in a best two out of three matches in a two hour time block.
I would accept that as long as there's a clear winner. And both teams agree, if you can sign off on the score sheet and the signatures are there, then we will accept that.
Okay, so we have some teams that are asking to start their league play matches before November 18th. Can these count? Yes, absolutely. It was mentioned that everybody needs to have a full membership, but for four on four. Girls and boys or coed, you do not need to be a full competitive member. You just need to be a recreational member. If your team does decide to play in six on six at some point, then they would need to upgrade to a full membership. What happens if we can't find a common time or place to play if we cannot find a. Common time or place, will we be considered for prebook gyms by the OVA?
I know that we do have a few prebook gyms. You can definitely contact us and we will see what if what is available. We'd also be happy to help out. In contacting or sending resource like our contacts for anything in the area. So let us know and we will, we will work with you to try and find some extra space.
I know, Mark, you've been assigning the facilities to pods already that don't have access to facilities. So we'll keep going through that process.
Can a negative PCR test be acceptable in place of vaccination?
That is not up to us. That is up to the facility and the chances are it will not be accepted.
Yeah. And as per the government regulations, originally, they did have it in there, not for sport and rec, but for weddings and funerals. It was never an option for sport and rec facilities. Unfortunately, and we do not have say on facility rules and regulations. We actually have to follow what their rules and regs are to be able to go into that facility. So unfortunately, no.
Are there any restrictions for league play? We say that they're flexible mini tournaments, but we would like to know if there's any restrictions on what can and cannot be done.
Whatever your facility allows you to do. As long as you're doing it safely or following return to play protocols. Yes.
Follow the facility rules.
Yeah.
If all teams agree to do to a day to compete the pool play, but there's no referee available in the region. Say up north in region two, will the OVA provide a referee to come up? From a different region, like will they cover costs?
Yeah, we can definitely see that. I would contact, if you were region two, so that would be North Bay area. Also contact your nor your Barry signer for region five. Or your northern region five signer. I'm not sure how they break it up and they may be able to send somebody. And we would cover if there was any travel requirements, we would cover that for sure.
Mark, this will be a question for you specifically talking about the 17 U girls provincial cup. It states that proof of being double vaccinated will only be required for spectators entering the venue. Does this mean that there are the only ones that need to show it for that day? Or does it mean that there are only individuals required to be double vaccinated?
If the venue was specific in saying only spectators, then it would be only spectators in that case because I know a few venues. It's basically, I feel like every venue is slightly different. So I know a couple of the venues we do have where it's only spectators. So that means coaching staff, officials and players would not be. Required to show proof of backs.
And as per the government regulations, spectators 12 plus have to show proof of vaccination, not just adults.
How come for 17 U and 18 U tournaments, pool play was changed to two sets and the lunch was removed?
So the lunch was removed mainly from just a everyone being off at the exact same time and not enough room for everyone to go. I know we all love our potlucks, but. That was one of our steps to try and help limit the mass congregating of people. And then to offset the shorter break, there is the potential for some teams to play if kind of the right wins and losses. I guess in this case, not the right wins and losses happen. Some teams might have to play three straight. So to help alleviate from the stress on the kids, we we changed round robin to two straight. So then it wouldn't be as tough as tough of a scenario for them.
Who is responsible for uploading the scores? Is it the host or is it both teams?
We're going to ask the winning teams upload the scores. If you do have a tournament that you, you know, you're hosting more than one game. Will be asked the host to do it. Individual league matches, winning teams should be uploading their scores. Using the forum stack link.
Have the OVA considered a scorekeeping or score sheet app where they would automatically link to the website?
We have used a tournament event software in the past. Team you, however, we won't be using that again until we actually start back into our tournament modules. The problem we lie, it'd be lie, I'm assuming they're talking about live scores uploaded.
I assume.
Yeah.
Ask the fact that they would have to send them to us first.
Yeah, okay. Or even just that, I think it's the score. The from my experience, the volleyball score sheet has lots of information on it. That needs to be recorded and tracked, whether it's rotations, serves, things like that. So I don't know if it's an easy app to upload. Rather than just keeping the scores 15, you know, 25, 25, 14. But we do constantly look at trying to keep our sport modern and you know. Adapt with the technologies, but we have not found a perfect system yet that would be applicable across the board.
Are balls being included in the hosting packages? If not, what balls will we be using?
Balls are not included in the hosting packages. You can use, we ask you to please use our Macassa balls that were. That were just released like the NBA, the green OVA ball, I can't remember the numbers. Or the VQ 200. We ask you to use the official volleyball from a casa, however, it's not mandatory that you use them.
Why are there no medals being sent to 13 U girls? It has been a long time since these kids have seen a medal.
I don't know if 13 U girls have seen a medal, considering that they've been off for. Two, almost two years now. It's because their tournament is they are based, it's it's round robin. There is not going to be an actual like. Winning team, if you will. All their structures for each age division is outlined on your league information page, which is in the links that were sent in your email. And that will kind of outline the format for each age division and. What they can expect.
And just an added note on that, we're still keeping with the same plan for even if it was a regular single A tournament, if there was no COVID, anything like that. The ECI age groups, their first terms of the year would still not have been. Like for points, a final standings or medals or anything like that. It's strictly a developmental event for ECI groups in this first. League play.
Better answer, Mark. Thank you.
All right, I'm just catching up on these emails are coming in hot. Okay, so. 14 U is best two out of three or straight matches? They're best two out of three. TNS still does require a referee. The only. A division that does not have to have a referee is the four on four. So six on six all the way up to 18 U will have officials. Who is responsible to manage COVID rules for players and coaches while the game is in progress? Is the October rule modification on the OVA site current or will it be updated?
Yep. So it's kind of a collective effort. The referee is responsible for knowing the modified rules of the game. So the ref is the simple answer for that one. But once again, everyone. That is a member of the OVA and is part of your membership to volleyball Canada as well as expected to know the rules of the game. So everyone should be made aware of those and review them. Sorry, I misspoke earlier. I thought it was updated, the modified rules of the game. That's the one that did not get posted today. So I will bug Dylan to have it live tomorrow morning, first thing.
Perfect. That's okay. We'll get it updated. Where do we sit with OVA insurance?
We have not received your updated COI from Sherry. Please let her know ASAP. They were all emailed out last Monday. I helped her with that. So. All of the clubs were going through and sent out. If there's any issues, please let her know right away. But you are still covered. You have insurance. Just ask for the updated COI.
Okay. Will parents be required to score in line? If they are, are they required to be OVA full members?
They are not required to be full OVA members. We are asking in the modified rules, if possible, you know, to have athletes available to do line and scoring to keep parents off of the. Field to play, but if it's not possible and parents do need to do some line and scoring, they can, they just need to make sure they're wearing their face masks at all time and. You know, following the rules of the referee.
So speaking of the finances in the expense form. We said separate forms for each league, but submit all at once. So can we just clarify? What we meant with that?
Yep, that just means submitting in the same email, but you can still have five or as many attachments as possible. And really. That's just for us to kind of manage, or I guess Mario mainly managing how many matches have been paid in each pod to date. So for example, if you're one club and you have three different teams and three different pods, and let's say you hosted a number of matches in each three. You could send one email with three attachments, one attachment being from each pod.
So to go along with that, another question was, do clubs that host in different competitions submit all of their expenses at the same time?
I'm guessing competitions would be referring to as different pods.
Yeah, like.
Okay.
You want this all from that team or all from that club?
The easiest would be the club because ultimately that's where that that one payment is going to. So if possible, from the club, that would be the the easiest option.
Is respect in sport required by parents this year? I haven't seen anything about it yet.
Yes, respect in sport is required. Yes, respect in sport is required.
Will birth certificates be audited in OVA this year and now that they can be uploaded in MRS directly by parents?
Yep, good information should be coming out very shortly. Oakland was working on the communications that was going out to clubs directly on with all of that information. Um, so yes, parents can go in at any time and upload the proof of age and enter their respect in sports certificate number under their athlete's profile.
If you have any trouble locating your certificate, um, you can email myself. Um, or even I want to say Sherry, but Sherry's really busy right now, so you can send me an email and I'll be happy to help you out with your certificate number.
Um, what if you were a head coach and you didn't receive a welcome email yet to your pod? So I can answer that because I know a lot of head coaches are not included. Um, we were basing it off of the indoor team contact for your team registered in MRS. So sometimes uh majority of the time it was your uh club contact, who was your indoor team contact, they would have received it. If you have not received it and you're still waiting on it, send myself an email or mark an email depending on what pod you're in. Um, well, um, division you're in and uh we'll be able to forward you that email and let you know what pod you should be in. Um, so me an email for four and four to fifteen U or Mark for sixteen U league play. What happens if a game or games cannot be completed on time? Are they considered unplayed, a draw?
Um, we again will hopefully uh be a little bit flexible with that um, that timeline there and you can get it in. Um, my first instinct would be if a game was not played, then it would just be um not counted in your standing.
And near the end, Kate and I will probably have a pretty decent idea of as the results were coming in, we'll probably see a few pods like, hey, like, what's going on there? We might not have seen results, so we'd probably reach out in that instance and then we could kind of touch base. And then if you are gonna be a couple of days late, we'll we'll work that out and then, yeah, we'll definitely be working with you to to finalize those last few.
Um, for refs, most facilities don't have proper rest stands, platforms, et cetera. Is it okay for refs to stand on the ground? Um, we can try and branding in some other stands from a different location, but it's not necessarily guaranteed.
I would prefer them staying on the ground rather than a makeshift um stand. Um, so yes, they can stand on the ground. It might be a bit harder for them to um officiate. Um, so patience from spectators and teams and coaches will probably be required. But uh we would prefer them to stand on the ground rather than a teetering box on top of a box on top of box.
Are are the referees to assume that COVID related issues are in place private prior to the beginning of each match?
Don't understand the question, I do not believe, sorry, like in terms of protocols of being followed?
Whoever asked that question, if you just want to clarify in the chat, we'll um answer that in a second.
Also keep in mind that most checks are done upon entry, so yes, it would, it should be.
Yeah. Um, for TNS, are all the matches played with no special specialization?
Go ahead Caitlin, were you saying something? So like Mark had mentioned um before, um that the league play is um going to follow the regulations. That were assigned for your first term of the year. So um, we would imagine that every game that you would be in your pod, that would be the first tournament of the year. So whatever regulations were outlined in the youth competition manual for event one and for event one for TNS should be followed for your league play.
Oh, that, sorry, I just had a cough real quick. Um, for the first tournament provincial league, so for this entire league until end of December, there is no specialization. For traditional and specialized.
So yeah, that's outlined in the YCM um TNS event one. I can't remember what regulation it is. I think it's like four or something. But it's in the youth competition manual.
I don't know on the top of my heart, uh but there is a website, webpage um in the early contact section. That fully outlines um all the regulations for traditional and specialized, four and four, six on six. We know that this is all new, so make sure you check that out. Thank you Nancy, it's regulation six point eight.
Sorry, thank you Nancy.
And also make sure you take a look at our youth comp manual as well. What is the maximum number of teams in a mini tournament?
So right now, every, we've kind of prioritized groupings of five, six and eight for each pod. Um, that and the eight pods would be split into pools of four with a crossover matches. So um, we felt that these were the most manageable um as a number of games. Um, that would be permitted for each pod, so. If my math is correct, you have pool of five, you have ten matches to play in a league, in a pool of six, you have fifteen. And uh then in a pool of or a tournament of eight, I think it's eighteen.
I think we do have.
There are so.
One pod of nine that's split into four and five, but other than that, everything's eight.
Right, so and you have to remember, um, when registration happens for these things, we have to work with the numbers that we we got. And so, and that's why there might be a funny one here or there, but the majority of them are five, six and eight. And nine, now nine, well, the one nine.
If a team is not comfortable with facility rules, example, I'm not requiring masks or vaccinations. And therefore does not participate, do they forfeit?
Um, or try to reschedule. Um, so that's the beauty of scheduling. If you don't feel comfortable going to a specific venue, um, then maybe we could find a different one. Or look for a different area, things like that, so um. Yeah, try to reschedule before cancelling. There's, we have, I think, almost a month to do all the matches. So um hopefully there'll be opportunities um, you know, in the future.
And just to carry. Oh, I just wanna say, just keep in mind that um you can also have a conversation with the other coach. And the chances of a lot of those athletes are vaccinated, um, just because that is the requirement pretty much across the board. So you will find that there will be some safety that you could have within yourself that you, between you and the other coach that you keep in play.
Sorry. Um, can we put in a small buffer between pool play and playoffs in place of a lunch? A team could play four matches in a row with no break, Mark.
So as of right now, we're not putting a twenty-five to thirty-minute timestamp on it. But there will be a bit of a a a break with the hosts figuring out the matches from round robin and then telling which teams where they are. And also all three courts won't end at the same time. Um, yeah, and I I know exactly which one you're talking about there, it's definitely that that potential chance of that four in a row. And if it does happen for that odd chance, it could also be just as simple of, hey, to the other team, can we just take a little bit of break here? This is our fourth match in a row and obviously that doesn't happen very often, um, but we can work within that. But we're guys, for the start of this, uh, these first single A tournaments, we are gonna keep it down to just a shorter break. Enough time for the host to figure out the playoff seeding.
Uh, are we using a simplified score sheet like Beach for four on four? The answer is you're using the same score sheet as everybody else. If the crossover requires us to play teams from hours away, can we try to find a halfway point? And do all the crossover games in one day?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Um, I'm just gonna duck out for one second, I gotta do kitty check, um, so I will be right back.
Um, are TNS events number three, four and five listed in the youth comp manual still considered the January, February and March events? Yes. What has happened is we've had to take away the second tournament, the Challenge Cup, which would have been the December tournament. So everything in January is still as follows, everything that's posted on the website and in the youth comp manual is still up to date. Um, do four and four coaches need to wear masks on the bench and when tossing in balls? Yes.
Yes, at all times.
Um, how many matches would the original TNS round robin have and the second tournament in December? Compared to the number of league matches they are getting in that time?
So the first uh tournaments would have been around four, maybe five uh for your first tournament. So essentially, this first provincial league play would be the exact same amount of matches that you would have had in that first provincial cup. If it was a one-day tournament, and as Caitlin just mentioned, unfortunately with the ECI age groups that we originally had five tournaments for. We had to cut out that second event, so all ECI will now have one league play, which is uh November, December. And then they'll have three individual tournaments in twenty twenty-two.
Um, but if a game is not completed and does not count, does the OVA still cover the expenses for the unfinished match?
Um, based on that reading, I'm guessing this would be a scenario maybe where it was like a really crazy long two out of three to like fifty-two to fifty or something. But I would imagine you'd still get a good amount of game in ninety minutes, so we would still cover that ninety minutes. And then in terms of an official score, I guess you would just have to cap it at thirty-seven, thirty-six or something uh like that.
Um, I do believe there's a pod A and B in our grouping, which means we need to play seven teams in the next month. So if you are in a pod of eight, it gets split into two pods, A and B. You're only required to do your matches against all of the A. And don't even touch the B. The B will then do theirs and then there will be crossover matches as well. So you should be able to get that done in a month. Um, spectators on the eighteen U tournament says TBA by the venue. Is there a limit?
Yeah, sorry, I'm behind on that. Um, I got the last updates. Uh, I'll be posting that tonight at some point, and I did see one other note just about venue capacity. So I know sometimes, I'm, I think rumors are going around about different capacities, like for example Playground. I'm receiving a couple of emails like, hey, there's no capacity. But I just, uh, I just got confirmation from the venue owner uh about two hours ago. That there is the capacity that we currently have posted, um, so I am working with the venue owners. And so ultimately, it is, the information I'm getting is directly from them. Um, but yeah, there's two, I think Von Sportsplex is TBA and Skills Basketball, I think is TBA as well. But I'll have that updated later tonight at some point.
Thanks, Mark. Um, when pod playoffs happen, does the higher seed get to choose hosting, i.e. Sudbury coming to Toronto or vice versa?
We do not have this as a hard set role. In theory, it it does sound good and a good reward. But we don't want to say this as across the board, this is what's happening. Cause ultimately, the the ideal scenario is working within your pod and having that conversation with other coaches as to what makes sense. Maybe one venue is ten times better than the other one or vice versa. So um, yeah, in theory it does sound good, but we are hoping that the teams just work together and find the best a solution.
We also don't know what your facility availability is. So if um by chance Sudbury has to come into Toronto or Toronto has to go to Sudbury, because they were the higher team. Maybe they don't have any facilities in their area, so then that would become a mute point. So just make sure you guys coordinate, just as you're doing right now, coordinate with the team for the playoff or crossover matches. To find the best facility that works for both of the teams. Um, does it look like you will be able to secure venues for a regular tournament play in January and February? Or will you be doing a second league um format? Are we doing league or are we doing tournaments?
We're holding out for tournaments. Um, we do feel like there's movement um for venues opening up. We are holding out for that. Um, obviously, um, everybody's in a bit of a holding pattern. As we are um with venue availability and um, we're continuing to push and try to talk to ministry reps. And 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 that to kind of open up those school gyms. Um, but right now, the best I can say is we're hoping to do tournaments, going back to our regular formats for January. Decisions will have to be made shortly, we realize that, um, but we will, that's all I can say right now.
You hit it Carrie, it's a stay tuned. We're working hard uh behind the scenes to see what can happen. But uh, the the nice thing is, is we do have some response from the ministry and they are working with us to try to share our safety plans. And um, hopefully some accommodations to be able to get some of those rentals. Because even if um some teams are getting in, there only may only be a practice, not a tournament. Um, so stay tuned and uh towns, check the ticker on the website for the town hall.
Um, do do coaches need to wear masks during warm-up if they are on the court?
Yes.
Yes, all the time. Um, do we have to play all of the teams in our pod? We would have to travel four hours times two to complete. And if we are not, then we are penalized.
Um, yes, you have to play everybody in your pod. Um, obviously, if there is travel required for somebody. Hopefully, we can create group some games together so that travel is not required uh as often. Um, so obviously, like that's the flexibility of it. Like for everybody to try to work together to try and in multiple multitask or getting multiple games done. Or, you know, maybe they travel to you. Um, it is important to note that even if our regular competition was taking place, there would be expected travel. I know it may not be as frequently within a a league as as presented in a league. But um, hopefully, we can work that out and and make sure that everybody plays everybody in their pod with minimal travel.
And that also includes the pool. So if you're in a pod of eight and pool four, you play all the people, all the teams in your pool of four. Um, if our contact person is wrong for our pod, who do we inform? So if the uh name in the email for the phone number, email address, all that fun stuff is wrong. Let myself or Mark know depending on who sent the email. Um, if it is somebody new, like it was the club contact who was sent the email and they included a head coach. Let your pod know so that they are able to um make those adjustments for who did contact. So let your pod know and let Mark and myself know. Um, okay, we are in Windsor and have all London area teams in our sixteen U pod. Can we not try to arrange a full day tournament where we play pools A and B in the morning? And then a crossover match in the afternoon?
That is a perfect plan, and I have heard of a couple, because we are CC, Caitlin and I, we are CCed on a number of these pod conversations. It's uh quite many emails going in, but it is nice and we have seen a few that they have uh secured a venue and they are planning to do their entire. Pod in one day, which is is great. So yeah, for sure, if you can do that, it'll be awesome for everyone in that uh pod to get it done in one day.
Um, okay, so traditional and specialized, no specialization, six V six format. No switching positions for league play. The rule states we must identify the designated setting position. So can we identify position one and let that player, whoever is there each time, run up and set front row to all three attackers? Or did you intend the rule to mean a designated position where the ball will be sent to?
Uh, yes, they can designate position one, but you can also limit it to any position. Doesn't have to be position one, they can. So yes, position one is fine.
Yes.
Or two or three, as typically it does happen.
Okay.
Sorry, for for TNS, the indoor development committee did not want penetration. In the early tournaments, when there's no specialization, you just declare setter in two or setter in three.
The question would be if that was included in the youth competition manual, Caitlin. So you can confirm.
We'll have to double check the youth competition manual. Um, all the rules are in there. Also, LP has been very helpful of being our coach development guy um and specifying all of the rules for the technical side.
Yep, so unless that was added in and pushed to a later one, that they can do it from one.
Yeah.
So you can confirm that one in your FAQ.
Yeah. Um, okay, if we run into facility challenges in January, February, is there a chance, oh? the OVA could rent a convention hall or run larger events if capacity fails within the Ontario government rules?
We are looking at a number of options for come January, um, and February. And yes, that's on the, that's on the table. Um, so stay tuned.
Perfect. Okay. So I think that's all the questions. Um, if you have any other questions, feel free to email any one of the OVA staff and we'll be able to help you out or direct you to who we need to, um, get an answer from. Uh, again, thank you very much for spending your evening with us and asking all these questions as we start the league play. We're very excited. Um, and, uh, thank you, Alicia and Carrie for presenting. And if you have any questions, yep, let us know. And also the town hall will be posted as well as the FAQ will be posted again.